Welcome to the Carver Planning Board Meeting of December 17, 2024. These proceedings will be videotaped and rebroadcast by Area 58 TV. If we could, I promise to salute the flag.
Pledge of Independence to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, limited and just as a Father.
Amen. Our first order of business is a public hearing continued. Ellis Carver Realty LLC requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to Section 2330, 3100, 4341, and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaws located at 62 Main Street in Carver, Mass. Assessors map 71, Lot 9-1, in the general business zoning district for the construction of two Craftsman trade-run buildings, one at 7,475 square feet and one at 5,200 square feet with required access, parking, and related utilities. At this time, the applicant is looking to request a continuance until 1/14/25. Seeing nobody, I'm looking for a motion to continue.
I'll make a motion to continue the special permit and site plan review by Ellis Carver Realty for 62 Main Street in Carver, Mass. Until, what was the date again?
1/14/25.
January 14, 2025, in Carver, Town Hall, 7:00 PM, Room 1. A second.
Further discussion? Seeing none, John?
Aye.
Aye.
Ellen Sedello says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye. Okay, our next order of business is for a public hearing on the application of Jeremy Hunt requesting a special permit pursuant to Section 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 145 South Main Street, Suite Number 6, in Carver, Mass. Assessors map 94-16-0, in the general business zoning district, to teach students a mix of martial arts for fitness or competition. The floor is yours.
What do you need to do?
Can I come up and have a seat, just so the mic can pick you up a little better?
Right here?
Yeah.
How's it going?
Good. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Well, Jeremy Hunt, I moved out this way because I met my fiancee, she lives in Plymouth. I have another martial arts school in Albany, New York. Been teaching for probably the past seven to 10 years, on and off, but then I opened my school up about seven years ago, doing it full-time. I professionally fought for a while with Muay Thai and N. M. A. Injuries kind of took over, so I decided to teach it, you know, pass on the knowledge. And she told me there's a karate school that used to be in Carver that was successful, but then there was nothing here, so we found this location, it was cheap, figured maybe start something up, see if I get some kids and some families into martial arts.
Fantastic.
Good.
Glad to hear that. Any members on the board have questions for him?
You're planning on opening at 5:00 in the morning?
It could go from 5:00 in the morning, I've done classes that early before. It depends on what people's needs are, really. Some people like the early morning classes, some people like early morning, like private lessons, so it's a one-on-one times, not always classes. Usually the weeknights, like weekend, like weeknights, probably around like 5 to 8 are like the go-to hours for classes, and then weekend mornings are usually pretty good times for classes, but then other than that, it's usually private lessons, you know, people who want one-on-one time, or even, you know, strength and conditioning programming, so sometimes I just do functional fitness for people, so it's really what the needs are for people.
And this is, you have residential units on either side of this, well, property?
I heard the one guy just rented the space out. It's, I think the guy's friend who is using it as like storage right now, it's not an actual business space, he's never there, he just has all his heating and appliances in there on the one side.
Behind the building is a residential property, and on the other side of the parking lot is a residential property.
Correct. I think so, yeah?
Yes, okay.
Okay. I thought you were talking about...
I think, I think the other side of that is where the dog sitting?
Well, the fish, yes, but it's still residential.
Right.
So I don't know that 5:00 opening on Sunday mornings or Monday through, and Sunday would be appropriate to start, start that. I don't mind going until 6:00 because, but not on Sundays. Other than that, I would just recommend that you get approval for any first aid equipment needed on-site through the fire department or the emergency rescue, and those are my main issues or concerns.
Mr. Ball, do we know what time a U.S. A. Fitness opens?
I do not.
All right.
I do believe they open around 5:00, plus we also have a 24-hour fitness over there that...
A lot of people like to get up very early.
Yeah, but neither one of them are behind somebody's house, correct?
I mean, how many people do you think are gonna be back there at 5:00 in the morning?
Well, I mean, it's physical.
There's housing behind the Tractor Supply, that mall right there.
Is it the most space between Plaza and...
Yeah, but not behind, behind the fitness center, correct? I mean, where he's gonna be, the house is located directly behind where he's proposing to do his business.
Right, but they're not setting off fireworks or anything?
No, they're fighting.
Inside a building.
Quiet.
I think 5:00 is too early, but I'll leave it to the board to decide, and that's gonna be seven days a week.
Well, it's not guaranteed that I will be there at 5:00, if that's what people would like, that's what I would do.
You should have that option.
Yeah, that's the reason why I put it down as 5:00, just so you guys had an idea, right?
Well, I feel as though you should have the same option as other fitness entities in town.
There's a lot of people that like to get up very early, I don't like it.
Right, that's a long day for you.
Nope, I don't like it, I've done it, but I'm just trying to do it.
I think 6:00 would be a fair compromise.
If 6:00 is the way you want it, 6:00 could be perfectly 5:00.
Objection to the 5:00 AM, I think that's great.
Yeah, I think, I think the 5:00 AM, especially with as many, you know, blue-collar jobs, starting at sunup, trying to get kids the best training, private training, and whatever they can do, first thing in the morning, sure, it's a great way to start the day.
Now, if you have it at 5:00, I don't have a problem with 5:00, I get up extremely early in the morning, but if you had it at 5:00, it wouldn't be like a group, it would probably be one-on-one.
Yeah, yeah, probably. I'd sometimes maybe add like classes in later, a little bit later, and then if people want to private lessons that early, I could do it. I go to Joe Lozant's and train there, because obviously I like to train too, so he has early bird classes, and then he has classes around 9:00 AM all the way up until noon time, and then you take a break, and that's how a lot of martial arts schools run.
Right.
Just trying...
Maybe we could limit the personal training to 5:00 and classes 6:00 and 1:00.
I have no comment for that.
Perfectly fine. I could also do like jiu-jitsu and like wrestling in the mornings too, it's a little bit quieter, and like pad work and stuff like that, is where that can sometimes get kind of loud, the thwacking of pads and mitts, so jiu-jitsu's quiet.
I don't think it'd be any louder than a neighbor down the street that starts up at 5:00 with a concrete plant, so...
True.
All right, this is a public hearing, so is there anybody in the audience that wants to come forward? Seeing none, and I would like to ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for Jeremy Hunt.
Requesting a permit pursuant to Section 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 145 South Main, Suite 6, to teach students the mixed martial arts for fitness or competition.
As of now, good.
Second.
Further discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
Ellen Sedello says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye. And now, a motion to approve.
A motion to approve Jeremy Hunt requesting a special permit for 145 South Main Street, Suite 6, in Carver, to teach students mixed martial arts for fitness and competition. Approval?
Second.
Go ahead. Just with the caveats I mentioned, you mentioned personal training only before 6:00, and have their first aid stock reviewed by either, and approved by either emergency services or fire.
If you'd like, I'll go through the listed conditions in the permit.
Thank you.
A true copy will be recorded and registered needs, as of operation are 5:00 AM to 9:00 PM for private lessons, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM for classes. The business will operate in Unit 6 of Building 1. The issuance of a special permit requires the applicant, upon the issuance of a special permit, the applicant required to apply for certificate of occupancy in the building official. This process will include the fire department's site inspection to ensure compliance with applicable codes, including submitting of a plan to Carver Fire Department for updating systems for providers' use, provide a key for the existing supra-key for 24-hour fire department access. Use requires three parking spaces, and occupancy inspection by the Carver Fire Department to evaluate life safety prior to opening is required. The permit shall run with the applicant as a tenant in Unit 6. Candid conditions.
And again, that the fire department, as long as they're there, should be able to approve the first aid requirements for the mixed martial arts center.
Condition seven, the occupancy inspection by Carver Fire Department to evaluate life safety prior to opening is required.
Oh, sorry, thank you, I thought they were just evaluating the space itself, but...
No, well, the good news is, is we've had a number of these, we had the Good Bird, we had ladies teaching driving classes, so we've got sort of a standard list of conditions for people who are just moving into a spot, and so most of those were from those previous. So the Good Bird's right across the parking lot.
All right then, further discussion? Seeing none?
Aye.
Mr. Shay says aye.
Ellen Sedello says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye, welcome.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who seconded Connie's motion to approve?
We're gonna go with Ellen.
All right. Thanks, sir, enjoy.
Congratulations.
Don't expect me at 5:00. I don't take punches very well, so I will be there at 9:00 PM.
Yeah, so the board's gonna sign this, it gets filed with the town clerk, and then after 20 days, if nobody appeals the decision, you get to pull your building permit.
Okay, and then during that time, do I contact the fire department to do that myself?
Yeah, so, yeah, we're gonna, we'll set you up with that.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, very good. So the second, was Ellen you said?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks. Enjoy it, guys.
Good night, congratulations.
Congratulations.
So before we leave tonight, we can sign that updated one, that'd be great.
What's that?
What's that?
All right, we have a request for lot releases, K&amp;G Development Corp., five lots located at 85 Wenham Road in Carver, Mass., assessors map 99, Lot 23-0.
So if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So this is for 85 Wenham Road subdivision. The process, as we've talked about before, but I'll go over it again, is that with the completion of the work in the subdivision, we have our consulting engineer go out and inspect the work and produce a bond amount to make sure that the remainder of the work in the subdivision is done. Typically builders don't want to put the wearing coat down on the roadway while they're still building things, because equipment and things like that are gonna be, you know, marking up the pavement a bit. So when we do a subdivision, what protects the town from anybody selling a lot prior to the work being done is the covenant on the subdivision. A lot release releases the properties from the covenant so they can be sold and built as houses. We hold bond to ensure that the work is done. That bond amount is $34,519. I'll be working with the applicant to secure that bond, there are three things that you can make as a bond, a cash bond, a tri-party agreement, or basically an insurance policy to ensure the work is done. So with the planning board's approval and signature on the lot releases, I hold a lot releases until we have the charity in hand, and then I release the lot releases to developers and they can start to build the lots. So the things that they have left to do are essentially the pavement on the end, and a bit of maintenance and ongoing landscaping. So that estimate, as I said, is for $34,519, and with the vote of the board to release the lots, I'll have you folks sign this, we'll get it notarized, and I'll hold it until we have a bond in place.
So the bond is already in place?
Right now, the covenant is in place to make sure no one sells a lot, so the bond replaces the covenant.
Okay. All right. Now, do we need a motion then?
Yeah, a motion to approve the lot releases for Ohana Way, K&amp;G Development Corporation, Wenham Road, to release lots 1 through 5, as shown on the plan entitled definitive subdivision plan, 85 Wenham Road, Carver, Massachusetts.
All right, I will ask for said motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, request for lot releases for K&amp;G Development, five lots, 85 Wenham Road in Carver.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Hearing none?
Aye.
Mr. Shay says aye.
Ellen Sedello says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye.
All right, and that is the second thing I'm gonna ask you folks to sign. Over here.
All right. We're at our planning board member notes, and at this time, I'd like to ask our planner, what do you have in store for us?
All right, if I may, Mr. Chair, so... All right, so last week, I went to an informational meeting at the police station, and I wasn't necessarily invited, but I went because I wanted to find out what sort of information was out there, and it turns out, there's a lot of uncertainty about what's actually going on with the law and how it applies to Carver. So what I've done is I put together a PowerPoint presentation, this is something I got when I went to the Massachusetts Municipal Lawyers Association seminar back in August, and I've incorporated some of Carver's information into it to sort of explain to folks, you know, what's up with the law and what the process is. I want to start off by talking about zoning. Zoning is like a, like a menu at a restaurant, it's like, well, these are the things that you can do with the zone. Zoning doesn't make anybody do anything, it allows people to do things with the zone. So it is, it basically lays out the rules that people have to follow when they want to use a piece of property for something. Under the MBTA Communities Law, the town is not required to build housing or any infrastructure of any sort in the way of water or sewer, it's, the town is only required to create zoning. In the slides, they talked about, you know, what is the MBTA, why we're doing this, it talks about the housing crisis, what's an MBTA community, those basic requirements and some clarifications. So this is the slide that talks about why is the Commonwealth doing this, similar to allowing ADUs as a right, the legislature has looked and said, you know, we need more housing in Massachusetts in order to deal with the fact that things are very expensive, a lot of places aren't available for people to live at, and it's having an impact, they perceive, on the future economic growth of the whole region. If there aren't enough places for people to live at, businesses don't relocate to Boston, businesses don't relocate in other areas, and they move to other places. I made an analogy, and not a great analogy, to Detroit, you know, back in the glory days of GM and the Big Three, and you know, Detroit and the area around that was a very thriving community, but when the industry that supported the region left, that's what produced the rust belt. And so the concern is, is that without a sufficient number of places for people to live, the businesses to support the regional economy, the state of Boston through tax collections and things like that, has an impact to affect the whole region. So that's why the state is putting their thumb on zoning across the Commonwealth, and particularly across the MBTA zoning districts. So these are some of their slides, I'm not gonna dwell on those, they have them, and by the way, we've created a website, and all this information is going to be on the website, on the town's page, we'll have that at the end. So all the information I present to the planning board will be on the website, so people can access that and find out what's up with the law. So this slide presentation is on our website, which we launched sometime earlier this afternoon. So what's an MBTA community, there's 177 communities that are required to create this zoning. Carver, down here, is one of the 35 adjacent small towns, and those adjacent small towns have a little different rules than the other towns that are directly on transit or in transit communities. So I won't get into this particularly long description of what the law calls for, but essentially it says, if you're in a community that is adjacent to the MBTA, you're obliged to create zoning for 15 dwelling units per acre, irregardless of size, that is what's required to comply with the law. The slide that I plugged in here talked about where we're at, and we're at the bottom there, that adjacent transit community, means an MBTA community with no transit within its borders or within 5 tenths of a mile of its border. The requirements of the zoning for Carver is that Carver has to have a zoning district or districts that allows for 235 multifamily units as of right. Those can be rental or ownership, condos, apartments, we don't regulate by ownership, we regulate by the use, so multifamily, could be rental, could be condo. Those housing units have to be suitable for families with children, there's no age restrictions, there's no bedroom caps, no occupants on zoning. The units cannot be used for short-term rentals such as Airbnb, and there's a minimum gross density of 15 dwelling units per acre. So if there's a three-acre lot, you could put 45 units on that three-acre lot under what the law requires. That's what the zoning requires, nobody requires anybody to build anything. Unit capacity, that's how we got to 235, they look at what is the size of the community and take a graduated read of that, so based on the number of housing units that are in Carver, at 5% of those, that's where the number 235 comes from. When this first came out, the law said a community will create a 50-acre zoning district for 15 units per acre, and that equated to 750 units, and a lot of places, people are going, that's crazy, that's gonna overwhelm small towns. So that's where in the regulation, they went back and tweaked this to a bit, to make it more appropriate for the, basically geared to the size of the community. Non-compliance with the law makes the town ineligible for 13 different grants, including mass works, housing works, infrastructure, housing choice, and the Attorney General had advised advisory on 31523, I'll find that and post it to the website as well. So what does that sort of stuff look like? So this is what's called missing middle...
Lushes.
So this is what's called missing middle type of housing, what you see on this slide. So, pardon me? So those missing middle units could be things such as, you know, duplexes, very sensitive, could be duplexes, could be fourplexes, could be courtyards, could be townhouses, could be triple-deckers, as they call it here. Those are the basic sort of units that I've talked about before, where if you look at the manor houses and the walk-ups, you might get 12 to 15 units or 10 to 15 units per. So this is the type of housing that they're looking at. Now, zoning doesn't design what a house looks like, zoning basically says, this is the density, and these are the setbacks for these types of houses. So just sort of visual image, the MBTA Community Law does not require the production of housing, it does not compel communities to pay for infrastructure costs for future developments, it doesn't supersede the Wetlands Protection Act or Title V, it doesn't supersede historic districts, and it does not allow, the MBTA law does not supersede historic districts and does not allow municipalities to get a waiver or exemption from the requirements. As of right typically means site plan review, so the planning board does site plan review now for particular uses, and in this case, it would be site plan review that would come to the board. So in the event the town adopts the zoning, in the event somebody decides to use it, they would fill an application with the planning board, and they would come in for site plan review where the planning board will look at the regulations, the setbacks, traffic circulation, and things like that. There are, once again, as I said before, there are no limitations on the size of the units, the number of units, the size of the bedrooms. As of August 1, 43 places had complied, 50 were in the pre-adoption. The take-home point here is that the goal of the technical assistance is to allow towns to tie into some free technical assistance to help with some of the more technical aspects of this, you know, we're a small town, and we don't really have the GIS skills to sort out some of the particulars that's required in the zone. There are, as of November 22, 105 MBTA communities have submitted or adopted zoning to comply with the law, and 35 have been deemed compliant. The town of Carver has until December, the end of December 2025, December 23, 2025, to create zoning. As I talked about, the technical assistance, over $7 million of technical assistance have been set aside, and we'll be looking at doing, working with the folks at Mass Housing Partnership for some of that technical assistance in order to determine if the zoning is compliant, because this is an iterative process. The Commonwealth wants to make sure that towns aren't gaming the system by saying, yeah, our zoning for 235 units is in the middle of a swamp. They want to look at the parcels that were identified and make sure that they have the carrying capacity to build those units. So when we look at the list of properties, we'll talk about later on, I've done a, you know, a very broad estimation of how many units you might get on that, but our first step is to present that area that we're considering to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and have them say, yeah, those areas are compliant, you've got enough area there in order to potentially build or zone for that many units. Once again, and I'll say it over and over again, no one's required to build anything, people are required to create zoning. Technical assistance, we talked about a minute ago. Sharon, the takeaways from this, 71 communities have adopted it, and some of the things they're gonna look at, and these are more of the technical slides, they look at, you know, lot characterizations, whether flood plains that are impacting the areas, or water resource areas that require special permits, earth removals, land uses, all these things that we'll be looking at when we meet with the Commonwealth about how the zoning will work. Inclusionary requirements, you can create, and the MBTA zoning bylaw is not an affordable zoning act, it's a housing act, it's a housing act, there's no affordable requirement to it, but towns can create up to 10% affordable. But towns can create up to 10% affordable in the zoning and perhaps more if they do an economic feasibility analysis, as shown in this bullet point. 40R districts, I had talked previously about could the town of Carver create a 40R district as part of the MBTA zoning district? And in the absence of having any infrastructure, you cannot. Because one of the requirements of 40R, which compensates the town for the zoning they do, is you have to provide a statement that says, yes, we have the capacity for water and sewer to support that type of units. And Carver does not have that. So we won't be looking at a 40R type of development. We're looking at strictly creating an overlay district. So compliance model is what we talked about before. They're going to look at those zoning metrics and make sure that what's being suggested as far as an area and what's being suggested as far as a text meets the requirements of the law. They do give you the opportunity to submit your draft zoning to them for review as well. So if you get to a town meeting, when you get to a town meeting, whatever you bring to town meeting, they have already looked at and said, yeah, if you pass this at town meeting, it's going to comply with the law. At town meeting, this is a 50% plus one vote because it is housing type of zoning. Most zoning is two-thirds majority, but because this is housing related, the vote at town meeting is 50% plus one. Clarifications, you can have more than one district location. In other areas that are small towns, there has to be a minimum of five acres of the site. Half the district must be contiguous. And this, talk about continuity. You know, what does the continuity mean? Well, that's this slide here. It basically shows you can have zoning across the street from each other. You can have zoning that has two different densities. You can have, the overall density for the district has to be 15 dwelling units per acre. But you could have a density on the street of state, and I'm just going to make up a number, eight units per acre, which looks like a townhouse, looks like something like that. So you could have that on the front of the street. So when people go by, they look, well, this is, these aren't, you know, larger houses, larger structures. These are something we might see. But you've got to make up that others' density deeper into the district. So the overall density for the development has to be 15. You could put a smaller density on the front and then build or zone for larger properties behind it. So that is the sense what was required by the Commonwealth for those 175 towns. As far as what we're looking at here, and I'm pretty sure I closed my memo. So give me a second to bring that back up.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Let Mr. Bart finish and then I'm prepared to let people speak.
Thank you. It's so quiet.
Isn't it? May vote. Tap the side of the screen. We got to clean up on room four, John. Can you stop by and see me? My tech is failed. Well, we're waiting for John. So the memo that I put together for the planning board for tonight worked off of the discussions we had on December 10. One of the things that were suggested was what about the Robie Propane property and looking further to North Carver? So what I did is I went to North Carver and looked at some of the properties that's up there. And I have identified 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 6 properties in North Carver, right by the on-ramp. That'd be Robie Propane on the right side of the road or on the east side of the road. And across the street is Shaw's, CVS, CVS parking lot and the shopping center that Cornerstone's Pizza is in. Looking at those particular parcels, the goal was to look at properties that are, for the most part, previously developed, at front on Main Street, and minimize any additional disturbance of wooded properties. So as I said before, we do have to do some additional vetting using the GIS to develop this. But based on those properties at Robie Propane, at Shaw's, you could conceivably create a zoning district there in order to create the zoning overlay. Now, a zoning overlay is an additional bit of zoning. So no one loses any zoning. We don't take any zoning away. The zoning in the area there is for highway commercial and for village business district. The, if someone wanted to build in these areas, they could, you know, buy the property and develop it for the use of multifamily. Whether they wanted to try to buy Shaw's or CVS or the Cornerstone's shop, they could put the zoning there, they could put the zoning on the Robie property. I looked at five pieces of property in Robie. You guys have these pictures in front of you. So the Robie property there is five pieces of property. The two on the front of Main Street have already been developed. As we get a little deeper into it, there's a piece of property that is fully wooded, 3.67 acres, and another piece of property that's fully wooded is 3.58. I steer away from them because back to the, back to what we'd like to see is have those properties for the zoning on Main Street. So there are any size streets people are driving down. And keep things from, you know, cutting down too many trees and doing too much more additional development of the property. There's a couple of different options for the board, as you see in this document. The Robie property, 51 units possible there, 16 on the second Robie property.
Sorry to interrupt. Could you please clarify why you didn't include the other two pieces?
I will. So 51 on the first property and 14 on the second. Across the street, 137 potential units on Shaw Shopping Center, nine at the CVS, 22 at the driveway behind that, and 42 for Carver Crossing, I think that's what it's called, where the Cornerstones is at. The two pieces of property behind it have a 41 and a 48 on it and those are blue lettering. So the town has an option to how they want that district to go. I was looking at not incurring deeper into the residential neighborhood that's on High Street by minimizing the amount of area for redevelopment at the Robie properties that have already been developed. If the town wanted to bring that zoning district closer to Route 3, you could get rid of, you can move the zoning line up from Carver Crossing and take those 42 units and extend the zoning district to that one wooded parcel directly behind Robie's, which is, has the capacity for 41 units. So what I wanted to give the board was sort of an à la carte menu. Do we want to keep the zoning on the west side of the street? And I looked at that because that's already commercially developed. And the more you commercially develop the east side of the street, the more you start to encroach upon, you know, houses and things in the back. I didn't want to drag it down North Main Street because there's a house directly next to that. There's another house at the corner of High and Plymouth Street. So my goal was to minimize the zoning to the developed areas and places that are already commercially developed to minimize any impact on residential neighborhoods. You with me?
I am. I'm waiting to see the Town of Carver action plan for increased density housing.
So the zoning, as I said, would be in the form of an overlay district, where property owners would have an option of using the existing zoning of highway commercial or village business or the MBTA zoning overlay district. The goal is to identify these areas so the Executive Office of Housing and Community Developments can confirm there's enough developable property to comply with the law. The only action the board needs to take tonight is to vote to place it on the warrant. The board wants to talk more about potential areas for the zoning, we can certainly continue that conversation into January. I'm just trying to get an area identified and get it into the state's hand to have them get back to us. But, you know, we're under no need, there's no rush to identify the area. I'm just trying to lay it out for folks. So our goal tonight, and because the warrant closes on the 27th, is to vote to put something on the warrant. That warrant language would likely read something to the effect of to see if the town will amend the Carver zoning by law and Carver zoning map to create an MBTA community multifamily overlay district in North Carver that will allow for 235 multifamily units, suitable for children, suitable for families with children, by December of 2025, with a density of 15 dwelling units per acre and a minimum 10% affordable. As to the actual zoning, I provided a couple of small-town that had their zoning. There are also some other models available on the MBTA website. And I'll be spending the rest of December and into January looking at those and bringing some of those to the planning board for their consideration. The hearings will likely start in February. And based on the interest of this, we'll likely have the hearings perhaps at the school. You know, we had a good, big turnout when we were talking about solar and batteries a few years ago. So based on interest, we'll likely have those hearings at the school. So there's room for people to come and not have to squeeze into room seven. So as I said before, the town can create, you know, smaller sub-districts along the road, but you've got to make that up with what's behind it. So you put in the front, you know, six, eight units per acre. But in the back, you'd have to have something higher than 15 to get over to the maximum amount of density. As I said before, as you saw on the slide, those missing middle sort of units are what is identified in the memo and included a, you know, that sort of graphic that suggests you should have an A and a B district. Now, I go on to say, I did not look at any properties suggested for South Carver due to one, they wouldn't be consistent with the goals of the master plan adopted in 2017, citing the importance to many people who participated in the creation of the plan by protecting Carver's small towns and rural character by encouraging growth in preferred locations. And some of the areas suggested are within an environmental justice area. So the south part of Carver, the area south of South Meadow Road and east of Route 48, which includes Tremont and Wareham Streets, where at least 25% of the households have a median income of 65% of less than the state median income. That is what qualifies it as an environmental justice area. And the concept of in the environmental justice neighborhoods are, these are neighborhoods, whether they're here or elsewhere, where these folks don't necessarily have the resources to fight town hall or to fight, you know, big business is going to come in and put, you know, some sort of plant, some sort of factory near their neighborhood. So Carver's environmental justice designation is based on income and it covers that entire area, south of South Meadow Road, east of Route 58, which includes Tremont and Wareham. So I have done no analysis for that. I instead looked at pushing the zoning up towards Route 44 because essentially the master plan says, put stuff where stuff's already at. Preserve the rural character of Carver by building along the Route 44 corridor. So due to the nature of the law, there are steps along the way to report to the state. As I said before, the Executive Office of Housing and Local Communities will review draft zoning prior to town meetings. We've created a website, the host information about the process. And there's a link to the website. The website is live. My memo from last week is on that slide presentation I did. And as well as this presentation, it has the maps and the chart of the areas that I've identified as potential for the town. And so happy to take any questions.
Did you use the Town of Carver action plan, which identifies the areas for higher density development, which includes High Street, Federal Road and the village districts?
That is what we looked at on the 10th, when I brought those areas that were shown as the.
Well, you mentioned Tremont and Wareham Street, but the majority of these on Federal Road and at the, and on High Street, it's off High Street, which I'm expecting is near the highway entrance to Spring Street. But it also identifies in darker brown areas, the village areas proposed for high density. And honestly, I think dumping everything on North Carver is problematic. There's already traffic problems up there. We're looking to add the Green Business Park in there. And anybody trying to evacuate from the Town of Carver has to pass through that point if an evacuation plan comes necessary to get away from the ocean in any sort of way. And they all have to travel up 58 through this way. It allows us to break it into smaller subsections, not less than five. I think we're required to do 5.1, I'm sorry, 15.1 or 15.2 acre requirement in order to meet this. And I don't think it, sections of the town should be overburdened with this. I don't like it to begin with. I don't think the state should be coming down here and telling us that we have to build stuff. We shouldn't compound on that by putting all of our eggs in technically one basket or putting all the people on, in one small area. That's too much. Although I do appreciate that it's close to the highway. It's also between the two most dangerous intersections in the Town of Carver where traffic problems frequently occur. And there's this frequent traffic issues in those areas. Those are my concerns. When we put it up for, when we vote tonight, we're not voting on a specific properties, correct? We're just voting to put it on the warrant.
Correct.
Are we going to have technical assistance from SherpaD or any other agency come in and sit down with the board and work through with this?
Yeah, with Mass Housing Partnership. So our first step is identify the area we want to look at and get that information to them and have them do that initial analysis.
Can you please provide the Town of Carver action map to, or a copy of it to all the members of the board for us?
Town of Carver action map.
Town of Carver action plan. It's a map. It's dated 2020, approved by the town. And it should be on the website so that the public can hear it also. Well, it is on the website, so the public.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to basically farm things from all the parts of the website and put them in this, in this spot. So what were those properties that you were mentioning?
Well, it specifically meant highlight certain areas. The village district, one is across the street from the Council of Aging, that area. One is in the center of town, but because it's all municipal buildings here or institutions like the Catholic Church, which make it ineligible, except for Meadow Brook, the only other eligible property would be the small convenience store out here. Then there's the North Carver Village. It highlights where the Frosty Dog and the other tractor places in that. It highlights where the Frosty Dog and the other tractor places in that area, I believe. And then it highlights the Green Business Park, and then it highlights Federal Road and High Street on it. Because I do have concerns. I know commercial value in this town is underwhelming, to say the least, in regards to affecting people's property taxes. But if we start getting rid of commercial land in this town, then it will unquestionably and most certainly affect residential rates in this town.
So keep in mind, we're talking about zoning and creating an overlay, so we're not eliminating any zoning. We're not eliminating any businesses. We're creating options for people to use their property.
And I understand that.
Okay, just making sure.
If the options is the overlay is overlaying a large chunk of our commercial district, eventually, at some point, somebody's going to come in. Shaw's might decide to move out, and then, well, Shaw's alone, the 15.1 acres for that facility there almost makes up the entirety of the requirement for the state in regards to this project. And again, adding 235 units of varying two and three bedroom houses in that area is going to create a lot of traffic issues that we aren't prepared for, not to mention the financial impacts on the town.
Any other suggestions for places to look for zoning districts?
Out of Carver. Yeah, out of Carver. Yep. As I said... I don't support this. I don't want this here, but I think the biggest concern that we should be looking at is from a safety and financial standpoint. It was at a selectments meeting last year wherein they were talking about the 40B project at Edoville. The police chief said it would have an impact not only on the police department, but on all public safety in the town. Mike Ryan EMS said it's going to have a negative impact on EMS. The fire chief said the fire department would need more apparatus. Something like this would absolutely constitute purchasing a ladder truck. That's probably going to be $2 million and not even touching the impact that it's going to have on the school system. We're going to need a new school. You know, so this is, I don't support this at all, no matter where you want to put it in Carver.
So the difference between a 40B and a zoning, if somebody's going to build something on a 40B, someone said, "I'm going to build something here," versus the zoning that creates the opportunity...
Wasn't it discussed at that meeting that you showed up at last week, that you have already been in touch with an engineer about the potential build out of this? There was some evidence of communication between you and an engineer? So was that not for the sole purpose of building this out?
True.
And trying to attract a developer?
No, I don't recall that. No, seriously. So I contacted an engineer about...
There was communication between you and an engineer about future planning on this?
Boulder Engineering.
Well, they're the folks who are doing Route 44. I think they ask, "Oh, we do these kind of things if you're interested."
Right.
And I think my reply was, I don't know what my reply was. But yeah, people approach us all the time about...
No, I understand that, but at two meetings ago, you said hypothetically speaking, a developer could come in. So it leads me to believe that there's been some communication, maybe with a developer or an engineer, that you're leaning towards this and you want this in this town, but I don't think the town wants it.
So no, there's been no communication with an engineer about lining up anything. The requirement of the law is the requirement of the law, and my job is to work with the town to make sure they stay within the law. So the only reason that we're having this discussion is because the legislature said towns shall adopt the zoning.
Right. But like Halifax, Halifax just squashed this like a bug. You know, so that's the right that we have as residents.
So, and that gets to town meeting, so...
And that's what I'm hoping for.
So we get to town meeting, and if the vote's not there, then the vote's not there, and the zoning goes away, and the state does whatever they're going to do. And what they pointed out is that, you know, the town won't be eligible for these 13 year agreements.
They're going to blackmail.
The town won't be eligible potentially, the town could potentially be eligible for some legal action. And I've talked about that before. But our job...
Please, Mr. Bott, continue to speak. I'm going to ask, we're not voting until I give you an opportunity to speak. Okay, but please, we have to hear what he has to say.
Yeah, so what were we talking about before?
Mary Ellen.
Oh, so yeah, so if the town votes it down, well, that's fine. That's the process. You know, the state gives us a mandate. We follow the mandate. We bring it to town meeting. If town meeting doesn't vote for it, then the state does whatever the state's going to do. That's how it works. But nobody, I want to make sure people understand that what we're talking about is zoning. We're not talking about compelling people to build anything. The town is not required to provide water or sewer. And I've had this discussion before about the attractiveness of Carver as far as the housing market and the fact that at the end of the day, when there are 100 communities, and I rounded it down from 175, because there's a number who passed on it, if there's 100 communities where a developer can come and build multifamily housing at 15 dwelling units per acre, where do we think Carver is in that list of folks? For the most part, they're going to look at lowland fruit, where there's already water, where there's already sewer, where there's closer to transit and closer to...
But you can't guarantee that. There's no guarantee.
There's no guarantees in mind.
I mean, this will change our community tremendously, and it will put us in such a debt. It's crazy. It's crazy that we are even being forced to do this. But, you know, I'll hear you out and just hope for the best come town meeting.
So when you have things like this, the best thing to do is to make the best thing you can get. So let's identify the areas we want to look at, and let's move the process along. And like I said, we'll be doing, you know, continued analysis about this and open the hearings in February to talk about the actual areas and the type of zoning that we're looking at.
So this is one of these, this is one of those things that typically I feel that everything we discuss should go to the town meeting, and it's why we put the stuff last year to town meeting that was rejected by the Select Board. In this thing, here's the, here's the issue that I have with this, and it starts right in the beginning of what are we not going to be required to provide? We're not going to be, the town is not going to be required to produce the power or the sewer or the water, but that doesn't prevent the state from coming in and giving subsidies to the developers to make sure that they get everything that they want in here, so that they can build whatever they want. But the egregiousness of this particular law goes right back to what's happened to this town with regards to solar. We have lost the ability to have any determinations whatsoever regarding the solar, other than setbacks. The battery system that was put in, we went through so much stuff with the siding board, with the power siding board and everything else like that. Looked like we had something pretty decent set up, only to turn around and have the siding board decide that the, that power loss doesn't have to pay attention to any of our zoning bylaws. So given the history of what's happened down here and what's been mandated by the state, I think this thing is to be killed right now.
Thank you. Mr. Bott, what does an economic feasibility study entail?
You know, Donna asked about that the other night, and I'm like, "I don't know. I'll have to look into it." There's a lot of moving parts to this thing, so I'll have to delve into that a bit more.
Because even if this does go forward, it's just putting a larger onus on the 10% affordable housing requirement. And if this is going to go forward, the number should be up to 15% in line with our other requirement for 15% so that at least it will have some positive impact on the town.
So one of the other things that was brought up with regards to these grants, and I did a little bit of research on the 13 different grants, of the two that were highlighted that we are eligible for, I guess we're eligible for them, I'm not sure. Number four, rural and small town development, we've never been given a grant. According to the website, there's nothing recent and there's nothing pending. Number 13, the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness and Planning Project, we did receive a grant for that in 2018. That produced a feasibility, not even a feasibility, a resilience study with regards to the water here, and it really shed some light on the fact that the, our fire department gets its firefighting water from the ponds. We don't have water piped in, firefighting water piped in around the town. So in times of drought, in times of, in areas, sorry, of high development, the water levels, it takes more water out of the ponds, and it makes it difficult for the fire department to respond. And as a matter of fact, in one of the, in one of the paragraphs on that, at the, at the start of that study, there was a cranberry farmer that was a part of the, that was part of the study, and this study was produced by Fosse and O'Neil, by the way. He had to up and move because of the development in and around his bogs. He was unable to continue to farm. So he had to move, probably moved up to Maine in order to continue his business. So bringing stuff like this in here is just going to put that much more of a stress on the town. I mean, there are bogs, and there's farming up in that area.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
And everywhere else. So anywhere we put this thing, it's going to put that much more of a stress and strain on the farming community and their ability to produce and maintain their livelihoods. You know, I've said it before that this high density housing and stuff like that, it's antithetical to what we have here in this town. It's, we have a culture, we have a community. Bringing in that much, that much, that much housing, high density housing, it brings in, it's going to bring in renters, it's going to bring in people that are not connected to the community, that have no desire to be a part of getting your hands dirty. And then those people are going to be voting in our town meetings. And it's just going to, it will, as Mary Ellen said, it will fundamentally change this whole town. Like I said, this is one of those things that's so egregious, it needs to stop today.
And what if we come back and reassess in two years and find out that we need to add another 230?
Yeah, it never ends.
The railway, they're expanding the railways. They're pushing, they're pushing all the way down to the coast through Fall River. They're connecting Fall River to Wareham, Middleborough areas. It's just going to keep expanding. It's going to, it's just going to keep requiring more and more on us, and it's just, it's going to destroy everything. Not a good, this is not a good, it's not a one size fits all.
Exactly.
Thank you, John. Connie, Ellen, Mary Ellen, have you any more, want to give the audience an opportunity to speak? Are we taking minutes on coming forward, stating their name and address?
Yes, absolutely. So if anyone's got something to say, please come up, state your name.
I believe you were first, so if you could state your name, address.
Also sign in, please.
And...
Could Donna possibly turn around so we can all hear her? Because I have trouble.
Sure.
So if we could do that, I would appreciate it.
I love the pen.
It's to keep people from stealing you.
There you are. I thought it was to keep sunshine in the room.
We got a pen issue.
So somebody did ask about the engineer, and I do have an email in my hand, and it's to Tom Bott from Boulder Engineering, B-O-H-L-E-R. And in here, he says, "As I'm sure you are aware, Carver is one of the many adjacent small towns under Section 3A that is required to create a bylaw multifamily overlay." And he goes on to say, "You have to be in compliance by December of 2025 through the Massachusetts Housing MHP." He's offering his assistance to write a bylaw. He said he can do initial education and planning, evaluating existing proposed districts, running proposed data through compliance models, analyzing results, and community outreach. Community outreach, that's educating us about this. Okay, so that's one thing. I also want to just let...
So is there a reply to that email from the town planner?
No, this, the reply is from Zachary, I believe. So anyway, so the long other thing is, January of 2023, the 40B was brought to the town, just like Mary Ellen said, and over here, we do have reports from the police chief, the fire chief, and the EMS that this would put a burden on the town infrastructure financially. Just a ladder truck alone is $2 million. And the state has not guaranteed anything to help us, so that's number one. The other night, we met with Mr. Bott, and he actually had a different plan. It wasn't this plan about North Carver. It was a plan about your Catholic church, and it was a plan about Pine Tree Village, and it was a plan about all the hunters out there, about your sportsman's club. So keep that in mind. So somehow the plans now are this, and they want these people to vote, but yet he has different kinds of plans. So I don't even know if they realize that you're not really voting on the location, you're voting to bring it to the town warrant, is what I believe is what you are trying to get them to vote for, to put it on the town warrant.
Yes, that's, warrant will effectively be in by the 27th.
All right. And then the last thing I wanted to say was, approximately 300 homes, according to our fire department, will bring about 800 more people to Carver. If that's the case, then this bylaw, it never ends. And when they do the census, guess what? We have to put more housing in, and it's never, ever, ever going to end, and that's the purpose of this. If you go back to some of the research, and I don't want to bring federal politics into here, but this was a design to take away middle class, and this was what it was supposed to do, is to ruin the rural communities in America. And that's all I want to say. Thank you for everyone.
Thank you.
Helen.
Yes, Helen.
I have quick questions.
Could you please give your name and address?
Well, I haven't gotten up here yet, Connie. Helen Maroney, Eight Harvest View Way, Carver, Mass. My simple que...
Sign in, so she can go for you.
My simple question is, and thank goodness, I'm happy to hear your reactions to this, if you were, if they were to vote this down tonight, not to go on the town warrant, is this, that nicks this whole deal and we are done? Or are there other steps that you could take to keep this going forward?
There are a number of people who can put zoning on the warrant. Includes, I believe, the Select Board. I don't have the list in front of me, but... Includes, I believe, the select board, I don't have the list in front of me, but typically zoning comes from the planning board.
And I would say that it is not up to us five people sitting here to make decisions for the whole town.
Okay.
It is our job to put forth the best brand that we can and then let the town decide. And that's the town, that's the town.
That's where this will go.
Okay. Thank you. My quick questions. When the hearings start in February, is it just your presentation that will be able to be seen? Or will we be able to have somebody representing people who oppose the project?
So at a hearing, the public has a right to speak.
Just like this?
Well, actually, this is, this is a meeting. So this is planner nerd stuff. This is a meeting, so people don't necessarily get to speak in a meeting. People have a right to speak in a hearing.
Okay.
You can have a meeting without a hearing.
Okay.
But you can't have a hearing without a meeting.
Okay.
But typically, the chairman says, "There's a room full of people, they got things on their mind," and he entertains comments.
Okay.
So, but at the hearing, there's people may ought to speak.
Thank you. I had had a bunch of questions about the grants, but thank you, John, you clarified a lot of them. Do you remember the dollar amount on that 2018 grant that we received?
It didn't specify.
Didn't specify, okay, thank you. And then lastly, in terms of this grand plan, because Donna is absolutely right, I've been doing research on, this is just a little component of a very big picture from the federal government, let me tell you. Okay, so it started with one big initiative over and above the federal government. Then it went to the SERPITS, Southeast Regional Economic Development Plan. And then they brought in ICLI, I-C-L-E-I, the building plan codes that are international. This is a much bigger plan, guys, and they are gonna try to destroy our suburban communities. So I just want you to know, there's a much bigger plan here. So my question is, since you have the design, with so many towns rejecting the plan, what happens? Like, I'm thinking, all right, you're gonna have a little depot here, depot in another town. What happens as different towns reject it? Do they have to alter the big plan? Are they gonna put more burden on the towns that have already approved it? How will that work? And that was my only other question.
Well, I can't speak to the future. I can only speak to what is and what has been written down and quantified. So I'm not aware of any grand plan or anything like that. What we're presented with is the Commonwealth of Massachusetts passed the law into the Charlie Baker administration that has now come to roost in 177 communities in eastern Massachusetts that are required to create zoning for MBTA housing, 15 dwelling units per acre.
Okay.
That's what we know.
So that's all we know at this point?
There is, there is, if you wanna check out, Michael Walsh has filed a lawsuit and is, is class action that they are going for right now. And so far, there's 35 towns have signed on to it. So it's, it's going with a constitutional home rule violation.
Nice, okay. Can I reach out to you on that?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you so much for all your work. I know this.
I just had one more thing I just wanted to add.
Let's let somebody else come first and then I'll bring you back up, okay?
I'll get there. I got run over by a Toyota.
I remember when that international code came in.
Kevin M. Sullivan, 138 High Street, in Carver.
You look cute with the sunflower.
And. Okay. I got a few questions, good ones. The water situation. Back in the seventies, when, what's his name, Boss?
Mizilli.
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 The select man.
Frank Mizilli.
Yeah, Frank Mizilli. Wanted to run piping through the town, it was voted down. The MWRA has already done a water study on the aquifer in the state forest in Plymouth. It is number eight on the list. They shut it down as far as going to Boston. It's not clean enough. We get a lot of polluted water down here. Muddy Pond was one, that was a bad one. They were dumping sewage in there. There are a lot of hazmat. The other thing is, when Makepeace put in a six inch pump on, across the street from my house, five people with shallow wells had to replace the wells, suck the water right out of the ground. The well was shut down. There was somebody on Main Street that objected to it at the hearing. And the company that was developing was willing to give her a deep well. But I ended up putting in a deep well myself, for $10,000. And that was before 2010. Cause water is a primary concern problem here. We do have an irrigation problem here. We don't have enough water. People say, "Well, Cal, this is a wet town." It's not really a wet town. It flows with the tide, goes up and down. There was a bog that used to be on High Street, four houses down from me, and they put a development in behind it. That was wetland. But when they came down to survey it, they waited till the drought in August, and it passed because there was no water in August. It's been continually full since. I don't know if people then have water problems in their basements that they built the houses on. They might not, cause there's a highway, a little rise there. I've been having water coming into my house in the basement, never had it before. Sweetest water. Sewage, we don't have sewage in Carver. It goes into a septic system. Theoretically, you can filtrate, you can urinate and drink the water five feet, a water, five feet away from it, if it goes through a sand filter. They've mined most of the sand in Carver.
Yeah.
Get sand pit behind Shaw's now. It is Shaw's, isn't it?
It is.
On 58? That was, that was enough to fill in the runway at New, Suffolk, Logan Airport. It took them 10 years to take out all that fill. It is now grade leveled all the way to the Middleborough Transfer Station, which they had to change from transfer, from a dump to a transfer station. And that's a lot of, a lot of sand gone. We don't have it like we used to. The cranberry bogs have to mine sand to fertilize the bogs. And a lot of people don't think of that. They think they were just making, selling it for a 25 cent tipping fee for the town. And that's a big deal. No, it's not. It's gonna put a lot of bargo owners out of, maybe not today. But within 10 years, you can see a lot of bargo owners kinda, we get a little problem. The other thing is, in Plymouth, back in the seventies, they built low income housing on, behind McDonald's and up on the hill there, Summer Hill. And they imported the people to put them, to fill it. But it was only a percentage, which is what they're talking here, 10%. Well, it was, those were the nicest apartments to live in in the seventies. Now they're all Section 8. And they get a security guard. It went down to, went down the hill fast. And history repeats itself. So as far as the water, the sewage, we get a problem. As far as the people, that's gonna come.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'd wait for that.
Before I bring Donna back up, please.
Was it a help?
Yes.
Thank you. Resident participation is the most important thing. Resident participation is the most important thing in these meetings. We don't get enough of it. It helps us make our decisions.
You wouldn't have got it from me either, if you hadn't told me it was coming up.
Okay, go ahead.
Two Ryan, three Presidents Way. I wanna clear something up that was said the other night, I was at the meeting. Is Pine Tree still considered one of the sites? The, who was mentioned the other night was Alain Newords.
We were just spitballing the other night. We were just spitballing, we were unprepared to choose sites.
Oh, cause it was brought up the other night?
We were just spitballing.
What happened?
We're still not choosing sites.
No.
But it could, no, it could have been mentioned.
Mr. Bott, didn't you say that you had to exclude it?
Pardon?
Didn't you say you had to exclude it?
Well, that was, yeah.
Pine Tree was excluded because of the EJ?
Yeah, so when I look at, look, two things. What does the master plan say where development should occur? And that, that take home point was made over and over, and it's preserving the rural character of Carver.
So Pine Tree is definitely out?
Well, that's up, that's up to the board. And as Connie said, they were just like making suggestions about it.
Yes, and when I was looking at the, I was looking at the action map, which points out, but it's, it's further, it's much further away from any of the manufactured home communities.
Yeah, and Pine Tree Village is also an environmental justice community, so by this law, we weren't, we wouldn't be able to.
Right, cause I posted something out there, and a number of people from Pine Tree were very upset because the other night it was discussed that development could go in by the park.
Right.
Worst comes to worst, it could go to eminent domain.
Right.
I mean, it's, I know it's a family park, but there's also a larger.
Yeah, and that would be.
And I lived down the street, a cranberry, so.
That's one of the things that I think a lot of us ultimately were thinking about was that, as Connie was saying, we were just spitballing ideas around in there. But when it boils down to it, the, the idea that a developer would come in and displace all those families is.
A reality.
Is a, and is a little beyond the pale.
It's a reality.
But it's, but it's beyond the pale. You know, the, the idea behind all this stuff, and I, I know it's not to displace people. It's the, the idea is to create more housing and bring more people in, not kick people out.
I know, but it was discussed the other night, John, that's why.
Yeah, yeah, and it was, and it was just a, again, it was, we didn't know what we were talking about.
And the Catholic Church is considered an institutional house of worship and is ineligible to be put on, on this.
Okay, as Donna said, this isn't, we're hearing different things tonight.
I've had, I've had some time to do some research.
Okay, okay.
And I, and I think that for the residents of Pine Tree Village, I think we owe an apology for considering that. Like I said, we didn't know what we were talking about. We didn't know the depth of some of this stuff. We've had time to digest it a little bit and see what to think about with regards to the zoning. And, you know, personally.
Okay.
It's, I would never do it, and I don't think that anybody that's here would ever, would ever do anything like that to, with the idea that, or with the thought that, the possibility that people would be displaced for.
That was scary the other night when I heard that. It was scary, you know?
Right.
When I, then I heard eminent domain and, you know, going into this stuff. It was very unsettling to hear. The other thing I wanna say, and I mentioned it the other night, a developer will build anywhere.
Yeah.
To say they're not coming into Carver to develop and build, not true.
I agree.
They will, they will build wherever they can. And people are flocking out of the city, they're flocking out of Quincy and South Boston because they can't afford to live there, and they're moving down more this way. So I just wanna set that straight. Okay, thank you.
And thank you for your concern.
Thank you.
I got one more thing to add on the water.
Let me bring Donna back up unless there's somebody else that has. Donna, please call.
I have a long email. You have one, you have three.
What charge are you charging?
Tierry Fugier, 303 Meadow Street. I spoke at the 40B, cause obviously Edibles are right near my house. And I'm gonna say the same thing I said then. We purchased our house here, we both grew up on the Cape, my husband and I. We moved to Kentucky for several years, and we wanted that same rural feel. So we purchased our home in 2014, and my husband actually commutes to Lexington to work. And we, we stay here because we love this community and we love the rural feel of it. And I don't wanna live in Hyannis, I just don't. And I just feel like these things they're trying to force up on us, that's what they want. They want us to be like Hyannis and Lockton and, you know? And we just, I don't think anybody here really wants that. And the amount of, that I think our taxes are gonna go up because all of the infrastructure that we're gonna need, I just think is too much. And I'm really glad to hear that you guys all feel the way we do. So thank you.
Thank you.
A couple of years ago.
You'll have to, you'll have to announce yourself again.
Just announce, just announce yourself, you don't have to sit, you just have to announce yourself.
A couple of years ago.
Did you announce yourself, Dan?
You have to announce yourself.
Kevin Sullivan, 138.
Kevin Sullivan, 138 High Street, Carver. I didn't think they'd forget that fast.
For a minute.
I was in the hunting grounds behind the Sportsman's Club. I was taking pictures for the, redoing the fences on, keep the rabbits contained. I exhausted, I had left my water in the truck, and I was dehydrated. Some of the people that heard it on the radio will remember this. When the ambulance got there to take me out for, I was dehydrated. I asked the paramedic if he was coming to get me. He says, "No, if you wanna ride, you've gotta come to me." So I started walking through the brush, and there was a tree bent over a waist-high that's three feet up, 36 inches in scope. So I grabbed hold of the tree, I took a step forward, and I went down into the hole so my arms were over my head. That was very hard for me to get out of. Now, I also talked to the president of the Sportsman's Club. He says, "I was very fortunate, I did it during the August, because when he did it, it was over his head." That's the drop of the water table in this town. That's an example.
Wow.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I was lucky.
Wow.
All right. So this was just the last email, Donna Forian, 278 South Meadow Village. This email is from Tom Bott to Elaine Weston, and Glenn Cannon has CC'd on the email. Dear Elaine, we are working with Baird, Baird?
Bull.
SERPIT, sorry, I always say that wrong. On our housing production plan. From that info, we will continue with developing a bylaw with the intent of bringing a bylaw for town meeting in spring of 2025. In the event, this is, you didn't hear him say this earlier. In the event it doesn't pass, we would use next summer to tweak and edit the bylaw and return it with a second vote, possibly in the fall town meeting of 2025. There you go.
There it is. There it is.
I've got more, a lot more to have.
It's all public records, you can all ask for it at the town hall anytime you want. It's all public records.
Please.
I'm borrowing from you. Hi, I'm Marty McDonald, 38 Seater Drive in Carver, and I just have a question, because it's been online.
Did you sign in, Marty?
Huh?
Did you sign in?
Am I supposed to? Oh, is that what the flowers for?
It's inviting.
Jesus Christ. It's an IQ test. I guess it is. Uh, I have a question, you were speaking earlier on using, um, Robies on 58 Shaw's, CVS, and that little, uh, development in there where Honeydew and the rest of them are. What happens to all them businesses?
Exactly.
If this shit, I mean, this stuff goes through?
That's the point, a builder is, why would a builder come in and destroy all of that in order to rebuild something?
Well, that, that's like half the commercial we have in this town.
Right. We're, again, we're here for zoning, uh, we're not here for any development.
Well, that's part of the zoning, because that's what he was saying the zoning would be, is in that area.
Right. That area, that area is already developed.
That's what he said, it was already developed, but if someone did come in and buy...
Someone would hypothetically have to come in, demolish Shaw's, um, and redo the elevations and build.
Okay. But that is a possibility.
Oh, everything is a possibility, that's why we're here, that's why we want everybody's feedback.
Okay.
What's that, huh?
At least, at least the church.
Oh, Star was where the church was, and then off to North Dakota Green was the...
Thank you.
Tractor Supply.
Thank you.
You're welcome, and, and, you know, this is why we're here, and this is why we want you to come forward. You know, we need to hear your concerns, we need to have the discussion, you know? We didn't need, we need to know what you have to say, that's why we're here. You've elected us to be here for this reason.
You all live in Carver, you all live here.
We do, we do.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, I do have a question, Mr. Bott.
Sure.
My question is... I just went blank, unfortunately.
See, it happens to everybody.
Yeah, I got, I got sidetracked, I got sidetracked. Well, I hope I think of it as it was... Oh, I, I know what it was. As a town, what is our consequence not to bring this even to, um, a warrant to town meeting?
Well, if it's not on the warrant, uh, you certainly won't be in compliance, uh, at least at the spring town meeting. Uh, you have until December of 2025 to develop zoning, uh, per the law. So, uh, if you don't do this at spring town meeting, uh, if there's no town meeting to vote it, then you'll absolutely clearly be out of compliance, because you didn't, you didn't create zoning.
So, I may be saying this as a, a simple man, but if we are not compliant, does that mean that the state can just come in and put this in if they want to?
No.
Okay.
No, so this is about zoning, no one is compelling anybody to build anything, these are about options.
No, no, I'm not talking about building, I'm talking about zoning.
Yeah.
Would the state, would the state just supersede us?
There's no, there's no eminent do, do zoning, you know?
Okay.
Zoning is, uh, is a local preference. The state says, here's the rules, here's the law, comply with the law. If you don't comply with the law, just like a speeding ticket or something like that, you know, you'll figure out what, what it is. But they basically said that these 13 grants wouldn't be eligible to you in the town. I think I've, I've read it to the group in the, uh, the Facebook group, you know, in the police station, that the attorney general has said, you know, "I'll use the powers of my office to, uh, to deal with the towns that don't comply with the law." To what extent do we, is that, what is it, I don't know.
So, if, if it goes to warrant, it goes to town meeting, we voted down, that's it?
No, he said he's gonna bring it back for a fall meeting.
No, currently, as it stands, there's no fall meeting scheduled, so if it goes to April town meeting and the town speaks, then I think it highly unlikely that any further, um, town meeting would, would move forward with this.
I appreciate the fact that a number of you have come forward. I'd like to know what the entire townhouse to say as well, and that's what our town meeting is for, you know? And I, I believe that the majority of the town is gonna vote this down, I can't see that anybody wants this to go forward.
Does it have to go on the warrant?
That's my question to Ms. Bott.
So, uh, the warrant closes on December 27th. If the board votes tonight and says, "No, we don't want to put it on the warrant," I'll report out to the select board, "Here's what we did last night," because we're reporting out on town meeting articles, the ones for ADUs, the ones that we've talked about for, you know, some things to clean up in our zoning bylaw. So tomorrow, whatever happens at the meeting, I've put together a memo that says, "Here's the issues, uh, here's the things identified by the planning board for town meeting."
And since the 27th...
I'm sorry, excuse me, Kevin, but if we're not in compliance, if we were to vote against this tonight as a board, that ultimately has the same effect as if we go to town meeting and the residents voted down, that's the same non-compliance?
Yeah, non-compliance is non-compliance. It doesn't go on the warrant.
I didn't know if it was on it, it would, it would be received differently.
No.
No.
I, I would, I would actually say, no.
Yeah.
Uh, some people might say, "Well, that's wicked efficient," uh, but, uh, you know, uh, lack of compliance is a lack of compliance. You have until December 31, 2025 to comply with the law.
And as, as Mr. Bott stated, uh, some other board could put it on the warrant, and then we would have no, say, any...
No, 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 not at all.
Oh, it would still come to us for...
Anything that's on the warrant for zoning follows that same process. So the step is, the board of selectmen says, "The warrant closes on X date, send us what you're going to have." In the case of zoning, we notify the neighboring towns, we notify the regional planning agencies, and we have hearings on the meetings, uh, for zoning. That's how it works, uh, so, petition articles, look, look at us, a petition article. When people do petition articles, you had nothing to do with those, they get a hearing just as well. So, anything that's zoned, uh, gets a hearing before the planning board, that's the law.
I just have one important question, but clarity...
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, Donna Forian, 278 South Meadow Village, Carver. How much, according to this bylaw, is, can you explain how much of it is affordable? Because there's confusion, everyone thinks it all afford, affordable.
I believe it was 10%.
Yeah, so the, the law does not require any of it to be affordable. The law allows the town to create 10% of it is affordable, and beyond that 10%, that economic feasibility is that you would ask me about the other night.
And then we're under the Boston rate for rental, correct?
Correct, so, uh, so, yeah.
We're under the Boston rate.
That's right.
That's what I've been trying to say, Donna.
So we're under the rate.
And how much for one bedroom under the Boston rate?
I don't know, I don't have that...
Two thousand.
Twenty seven hundred.
How much for...
Twenty seven hundred.
I, I don't have any of those numbers in front of me.
I did the two thousand, so...
Oh, no, the...
Huh? About thirty three hundred.
The house next door to me that rents out, it's somewhere around $4,000 a month.
Thank you.
Is that an affordable house?
Yep.
Yes. Okay.
Section eight. That's affordable.
Guys, now I like to chit chat. Caramla, Main Street, I just kinda, I just want to figure this out, so, a few years back, the towns and everybody in a lot of towns around us had this big thing where we, we actually had signs put up that says, "We're a farming community," everybody's considered a farming community down here, around here now. So I don't know how we go from being, what qualifies us, or if it was just a quote, say, "That's what we are," or if it's really has any pull that says, "We're a farming community, we're not really an MBTA community."
Right.
We're, we're a small farming community, I don't, it's not like we're bringing bog workers in, we don't, we don't need 300 new people to live in town to help us do that. So I just didn't know what makes it so special that we're a farming community, but when it comes to this, I just don't know if that takes any clout, you know what I mean? Thank you. Well, we are a farming community here.
Can you say that in the microphone so we can get that for the record?
Um, I have, um...
Your name, name and address.
My name is Ginger Johnson, and I live on Crescent Road. I'm a family new resident, last seven years in Carver, and I'm looking at numbers up here in the beginning tonight of, um, housing that has been built in Massachusetts with the years that they put up. And I'm reading that one of the purposes of this is to bring people into the state of Massachusetts to boost our economy, and there's not enough housing in this state. I would really like to know some of the numbers and statistics for the number of people that have left this state.
From, from my understanding, it's around 1,000 people a week.
And I have three family members alone that have left Massachusetts, and two of them had extremely high-paying jobs in Massachusetts. Anybody that's moving into this state that doesn't look at the tax bases for any of these towns and the infrastructure, they need to have a little cat scan down in their brain. So, I, my daughter has to go to Boston twice a week. This just started, uh, her company required them to go back in-house two days a week. Her commute went from 20 minutes to two hours. Takes her 20 minutes to get to the MBTA in Kingston, takes an hour to get in town, and then she has to walk to the office, and then she has to repeat that at the end of her day. To bring this many people into this town, do we know? No, we don't know that they're gonna be out-of-towners that want to come to this state, and that they have jobs waiting for them here. We don't know that they are people that are fed up with the town of Plumb that's so overcrowded, you can't go anywhere, that are gonna move here because it's less crowded. We don't know any of this stuff. It's all totally gray areas for us, um, and personally, my personal opinion is, when I see MBTA heading up anything, right away, it's questionable. They're oozing money, the trains don't run properly. Don't tell me that there's gonna be, how many house, how many people will have been to Carver? Eight hundred? Was, what was the number? How many of those people are gonna ride on the MBTA? How many of those people are gonna put up with trains being delayed, broken down, the red line, the green line, the orange line, they break down all the time? And this whole thing, uh, excuse me, but it makes me feel that they think we as residents are a bunch of people that just fell off the back of a turnip truck. I'm sorry, um, I'm just, it stinks, and it's very questionable. There's a lot of questions that haven't been asked yet, and there's a lot of questions that will be asked, and they won't be answered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank D'Angelo, 19th Grace Street, Carver, I just have a couple of questions. One, if the board tonight does not make a vote, can the select board override this vote?
I think Ms. Bott just explained that. I don't think...
I think they do.
I'm gonna explain that again.
They can. I, I, I think so. Okay, well, that doesn't make any sense to me, why is it vote, why are they voting that? Why don't you just bring it to the select board here? There are numerous ways people can put things on the warrant. Uh, this is just one of those avenues, people can petition, people can come to fighting board. The typical process for something like this, state law changes, we look at what, uh, how to comply with that, so we create zoning for it. Okay. Question number two, if you don't mind.
Certainly.
If we hadn't done a feasibility study yet, I mean, what are we gonna do if we don't know what's happening? I mean, there's no feasibility study done, right?
Ms. Bott?
It's zoning, all we're talking about is zoning. It's all types of...
I didn't understand that.
That, that happens a lot when we talk about zoning.
That was funny.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's no project, there's nothing being built. Uh, this is zoning that, uh, required by the state to provide an opportunity to create multifamily housing in the town of Carver. Yes, that's all, there's no project, there's nothing, nothing's being built, nobody's being required to build anything, people are required to create zoning. Good, thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, somebody else, yeah. Mine, see?
Yes, yes, just to close down.
Absolutely.
I'll be quick.
Thank you.
Paul Owen, 151 Main Street, your neighbor?
Oh, hi, nice to see you. Now you know what I'm all about.
That's right. Anyway, so, uh, last week, Mr. Bott was there, and he did, he did a good job. He was, he was not amongst a lot of friends, to say the least, and he was a, he was a true gentleman. I'd just like to point out that, as I sit in the back and try to blend into, uh, being anonymous and quiet in the back, I sit and I listen to you folks, and it, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I can clearly tell that a lot of you are not happy and comfortable with this. And I would say to you, there's a lot riding on this, I don't have to really, I shouldn't have to say that, I know that you guys are, you're all aware of that, um, but, you know, I would say caution, and if you're really not on board with this, um, I would, I would ask you to vote against it and not put anything on the article, and put it in the hands of the selectmen, and then let the selectmen suffer the consequences from, from the townspeople who are not, um, in favor of this. And that's what I have to say, thank you very much, I appreciate your time. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Pagaski has something to say.
Um, so earlier tonight, I was at the select board meeting, and I spoke real quick, and it, and the, uh, I think the, the biggest thing that I wanted to, to put out to everyone, uh, and in as many places as possible, is the select board has email, they also have an address, and, um, you know, coming back from, coming back from the training that I was at, um, last week, uh, one of the things that was really put out to us was, uh, as for state representatives and senate members and whatnot, is pay attention to constituents. Those, those people who are, um, driven enough to put it down on paper or put it into an email, they get the loudest voice. Those are the people that we need to really pay attention to. So I urge everyone, use the town website, carverma.gov, find the select board members on there, email them. There's a contact page, each one of them has a contact, email each one of them, email each one of us. Email each one of them, email each one of us. Let us know, let the select board know. Shoot, find any other, find ZBA, all those people. Email everybody you can, and tell them how you feel about this. The more people that contact them, the less ground they have to say that this is a good thing. So whatever you feel, if you feel, if you're in support of it, if you're against it, contact, contact, contact. And that's all I have to say.
The governor's in office too. The governor's office too. She might like to hear what you said.
She doesn't care what we say.
She found the record still, though. She's very to them.
All right, thank you. I think we are done with this part of our evening.
Well, actually, uh, we have to get back to, is the planning board going to submit this to the warrant?
Basically saying we're done discussing.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we were, giving you the reason everybody was here.
So am I asking for a motion to approve this, to take this to warrant, or am I asking for a motion to not approve? What is the correct language?
So my proposed motion was, uh, to submit this to the select board, or to submit this to the warrant. At this point, the language would say to see if the town will vote to amend the Carver zoning bylaw and the Carver zoning map to create an MBTA communities multifamily overlay district in North Carver that would allow for 220, 235 multifamily units, suitable families with children by December 20, 2025, at a density of 15 dwelling units per acre with a minimum of 10% affordable. So that's the placeholder, because obviously there's going to be a lot more information that's provided for that. But if the board makes that motion to submit that to the warrant and the vote is a majority, I'm going to submit it. If someone makes that motion and the vote is, uh, two to three, one to four, zero to five, uh, then my memo to the select board will say, here's the articles that were submitted. Uh, the board did not recommend putting this on the warrant.
I would like to ask for a motion to not recommend putting this on the warrant.
Okay. Hold on, before we make the motion, um, so on that, would a yes vote mean that it does not go to the warrant, or would a no vote mean that it does not go to warrant?
So your, the motion that Kevin just suggested to, is to not put it on the warrant? So a yes means you don't put it on the warrant?
Putting it in the positive and voting no on it if that's, and that'll take the confusion out.
I, I, I think that would be the, I think that would be the, the right, the proper thing to do, is to vote on it as it's written.
So there's no confusion.
Yeah, vote on it as it's written, because right now it is to submit, uh, to submit it to warrant, and a no vote would mean that it would not go to warrant.
That's correct.
I would, if I'm allowed, I would make the motion absent the word north, as in designate a north Carver.
Carver, yeah.
Put forward.
So that motion would be to see if the town will amend the Carver zoning bylaw and map to create multifamily zoning district in Carver.
And I would see, I'd make that motion in the affirmative to bring it to town meeting.
Second.
And if it's open for discussion?
Further discussion.
Then I would say, um, I am not in favor of this. But it's us five people up here, and as much as I can appreciate what Mr. Owen said, it is our job to do this, and it is not our job to decide for the town. It is, if the town is going to take on a burden like this, it is for the town to decide. One way or the other, this is going to be a burden, whether it's financial and legal action, and, and is, and that will be considerable in the short run, but probably, um, a huge bargain in the long run that we, we put up the money for it, or the town accepts it. I, I would, uh, I, I, and I think it's very important that the town people have the right and ability to vote on this. I, I don't think it is up to us to make a financial decision of this magnitude, um, from where we sit. That, that's all I have to say.
So right now, we have a motion on the floor for Mr. Shea to submit the article to the warrant as amended, in a second by John Gasky, correct?
Yes.
Correct. No further discussion? Ms. Tagaski?
I vote no.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says no.
Mary Ellen Williams says no.
And Kevin Robinson says aye.
All right, so Gasky, no, Shea, yes, Ellen, no, Mary Ellen, no.
No.
And Kevin, yes. All right, so that is three to two. Uh, so that's what we'll tell them? Do we want to take a couple minute break so I can get this decision for your side? So I'm supposed to hear about all the rest of the zoning order?
All we have to go over is minutes.
Well, we got, we haven't voted yet.
So you want us to recess?
Yeah, we haven't voted all the.
What's going on?
Yeah, so we'll recess then.
All right. So amongst the zoning articles, uh, for the warrant for town meeting, is the one for ADUs that we previously discussed at the last meeting. The state law changes basically require an ADU to be treated like a single-family house. The changes are, an ADU gets bigger, it goes from 800 feet to 900 feet, they take away the requirement that it has to be someone who's aged or infirmed or something like that, is no longer owner occupied, a maximum one parking space is all you can require for it, and if you have more than one ADU that you want to create on the site, it has a special permit by the planning board. The ADUs that we do have in the commercial area are treated differently because they are commercial, they're not in a residential zoning district. The other thing that stipulate, the law stipulates, is that an ADU cannot be used for short-term rental. I don't think I missed anything.
All right, Mr. Shea?
Hold on just a second. I thought that the, uh, when you, you were going over that with regards to, um, owner occupied, the owner does not have to occupy the.
Either one.
Uh, ADU, but has to occupy the property.
Nope, there's no owner requirement.
I thought I read that.
So, so if, if.
Requirement that the owner has to live on the property.
Nope, that is, that is previous to.
How is that not a rental then?
Well, it's, it, not to say it's not a rental. Uh, some, you, you could own a house, you could rent, and you could say, I'm going to put an ADU in.
It has the restriction.
And I'll rent that as well.
Okay.
There's no restriction on owner occupied.
All right.
There was one thing, um, that I think we need to, um, look at, is 2261. When you're reading it, I'll, I'll read it as the way it's written. Uh, purpose, for the purpose of providing small additional dwelling units to rent or reside in conjunction with a single-family house in the town or substantially altering the appearance of the town. That line doesn't really make a whole lot of sense.
Yeah, without, I think that was basically about not trying to substantially alter, so I'll clean that up.
Yeah, and then accessory apartments shall not be allowed in a townhouse development pursuant to section 3900.
That's what his only bylaws is now.
Okay. Yeah, that was, that one more section.
There's an extra in here.
Need to, need to clean up. Uh, and then, okay.
And one parking space per unit.
Correct, that the, um, there has to be enough parking so that there's no parking on the street. That is, I believe, addressed in section, paragraph F.
So would that require two parking spaces?
Uh, so you got a house and you got a driveway. If you got a place to park three cars in your driveway, you're fine. If you don't have a place to park three cars in your driveway, you, you get another parking space in your driveway, why in your driveway, put a little T off of it.
Right.
That's up to the building commissioner to determine that complies.
So it is in a minimum of two?
So the zoning bylaw requires a minimum of two for a residence, but maximum one for accessory housing.
Okay.
So a house with an accessory dwelling unit.
Is three.
Three parking spaces.
Understood, thank you. May I also, John?
Yeah.
Connie, ask for that motion?
I make a motion to approve the accessory dwelling unit bylaw as presented in the December 9, 2024 letter from Tom Bott, with the edit as discussed during this meeting, to remove the sentence or substantially altering the appearance of the town.
Do I have a second?
Second, Pat.
Further discussion? Ms. Tagaski?
This is to put it on the warrant, correct? Correct. Yeah, we'll have hearings in February. John Gasky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye.
And we can always rescind, but although this isn't one, I would recommend rescinding because it brings us in compliance.
Thank you. Next.
All right, so when I was looking at this, uh, we had a, 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 a change to the use table. So previously, there was a use regulation for mixed-use structures, and there was a use regulation for dwelling units above commercial or offices. When they moved it from the pre 2024 version, zoning to the searchable version, those two lines got collapsed for some reason. So we're just putting them back. So it would be a different use regulation for mixed-use structures and dwelling units above commercial offices is essentially going to be what the zoning said before, we're just fixing the chart.
Interesting.
Because the chart's wrong.
I'm looking for a motion?
Yeah, the proposed amendment to see if the town will vote to correct the use regulation schedule that was inadvertently changed at town meeting 2024 in the migration of the zoning bylaw to equal. Some, some unseconded.
Further discussion? Ms. Tagaski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye.
All right. So, and then we had the residential rate of development bylaw. So when we talked about this the last time, uh, I said that we've had this rate of development bylaw which hasn't been used since 2011. The current zoning says extension. This section may be extended without lapse of its provision and limitations by the vote of town meeting prior to January 1, 2011. So this isn't our zoning bylaw, it hasn't been used. And one of the questions that folks ask on grant applications is, does the community have any active housing or infrastructure moratoriums or other restrictive bylaws such as growth limitations? So in the grant that we wrote for the economic development plan, I was able to say in good faith, no, there's not, because this thing's expired. So it's just sort of an artifact, sort of like we had a moratorium on medical marijuana that we got rid of because it didn't need to be in there anymore, it just fell out of space because the town had voted to zone. So my recommendation would be, uh, to see if the town will vote to amend the Carver zoning bylaw by deleting section 292-4-1, rate of development to comply with changes to Massachusetts general law. It doesn't allow towns to access various grants, including, and I have the 13 we've talked about before. That's more of a housekeeping article.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? Ms. Tagaski?
Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye.
All right, so I, uh, we talked about this freezing in the stormwater, uh, the last meeting, and I'm working on that in addition to the other goodies, so, uh, let's put it on the warrant and figure out exactly where it goes to, and I want you to kind of help me out with that.
Yeah, because I don't think the whole thing needs to be on.
Yeah.
Right.
So essentially, the motion would be to add to the warrant amendments to the stormwater bylaw for tree protection. Is that the gist of it?
To add the, the tree protection from the stormwater to the general zoning.
Yeah.
Because I know the board had discussed it, uh, in several areas within our bylaws it mentions, you have to identify six-inch trees, you have to identify 10-inch trees, but in nowhere does it say you have to, uh, replant it or, um, take it into any other consideration than putting it on the site plan, but I, I feel that our bylaws are pointing to the fact that, uh, it's part of what makes Carver a rural agricultural and helps maintain it, so if you're going to cut down a, a 10, 12, 20-inch tree.
Replace it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if it's in the zoning bylaw or a general bylaw, it goes to town meeting. If it's a regulation, like our subdivision regulations, those don't go to town meeting. But let's put it on the warrant, let's figure out what it's supposed to say, and we'll plug that stuff in. So for the placeholder, we'll have tree protection for stormwater management.
And I, and I would appreciate it if you would speak on behalf of that, if we, if it comes up, well, when it comes up.
I spoke, uh, in favor of it when we were passing a stormwater pollution bylaw, and I think it was an important aspect to be included.
Thank you. Well, I remember at one point, um, for the amount of trees that were being taken down, I wish that we would have been able to condition that tree to be replaced.
And that's what we'll, that's what this is, we'll do.
Yes.
And so even if it doesn't come to us, or, well, to be decided, if it has to come to us, that we can make those conditions.
Yeah, so just if you would, Connie, follow up with me during the week about that.
All right.
Get a placeholder for it, for the warrant.
So you'll work on it, but we'll put it to warrant tonight?
We can always remove it from the warrant, but after December 27th.
We can't add it.
Anything to the warrant.
Plug it in.
Could I get a motion then?
I would.
So a motion to add to the warrant, uh, tree protection to replace trees per stormwater regulation, is, is general.
Yeah, so moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
John Gasky says aye.
Uh, Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye.
Okay. So those are the ones that I had for the warrant, uh, they're zoning required. Uh, I will tell you that the mullen rule is going to be on the warrant again. Uh, I did reach out to other adjudicating boards and ask them about their interest in this. So we have got a vote from the zoning board of appeals, it says they would like to be able to use the mullen rule. We had the board of health meet about it tonight and said they would like to have the mullen rule available to them. The conservation commission has expressed, members have expressed interest, but the conservation commission is talking about this at their meeting Wednesday night. So the mullen rule will be back on the warrant. Uh, it's not zoning, uh, but it's a tool for boards to be able to, uh, you know, just conduct their business with a bit more fluidity than without it.
This was voted on at the last.
No, it was removed from the last town meeting.
Okay.
It was voted on the prior town meeting.
So it's got to, it's got to stay a three years, though, if you vote on it.
No, it's not zoning.
Yeah.
Only zoning.
Only zoning.
Stipends?
Stipends have been submitted to the, the FinCom. The zoning board of appeals is also interested in stipends, as I talked about before, we put it in our budget. When I met with the FinCom, we talked about that, and they had, they had seemed to think that somebody was doing some sort of study about stipends somewhere, but, uh, they, nobody seemed to know who that might be. But for the purposes of the budget, we put it in our budget, the stipends for the planning board, and other boards are interested as well. So there is a tech warrant article on the warrant typically that says salaries of elected officials. When you get into, you know, nerd speak like I have to do in my day job that sometimes goes into the night, well, a, 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 a conservation commission is appointed and a ZBM is appointed, so they're not elected officials, but typically those things wind up in the warrant. So we launched the. So we launched the flare, we raised the flag to deal with warrants at town meeting.
And would that address our concern? I'm sorry.
The woman that takes our minutes, she was, she asked me about that, and I said I would ask you, but can that go on that stipend as well?
So, minute takers, and I talked to Mary Ann about this prior to having this discussion because she and I talked about compensation for minute takers. We've had that discussion in-house about whether the town can change, that is, it's not a stipend for you guys, it's a salary for her. So I've talked to, to accounting and the town administrator about, is there something we can do for that? So it's not a town meeting article, it's sort of a procedural thing with the policy for the town.
So, they don't get paid?
Oh yeah. So they get paid, you know, I think it's, I'm gonna mess up the numbers here, it's like $75 to do a meeting. If the meeting goes over two hours, they get to do more stuff. Some meetings are easier to do minutes for. You know, if you're the, I'm just gonna make up, if you're the committee to protect rabbits, they have a whole lot less to talk about than we do.
Right.
So when, you know, we have a meeting, and the minute takers, like, I'm trying to get all this, condense all this stuff down, you know, it's a lot of work for her to get to that point. The small benefits are, well, you, you don't have to come out in the cold to where you're gonna do, and you can do this remotely. We had minute takers in Falmouth that lived in Maine and places like that, because, you know, with audio and ruck cascades and things like that. But she did express an interest in more money for the, for the gig, and I passed that message along and moved it up to chain to see what we can do about that. But it's not a town meeting article.
And then my question was, as far as appointed is concerned, Mr. Maynard would, would still not be able to receive a stipend?
No, we created a stipend for them last year. Like I said, that is, you know, the, how things wind up in the budget.
Or Mr. Maynard's position.
Yeah, how, how things wind up in the budget, it says salaries for elected officials, that's typically a warrant article. I'd have to go back and look and see what it did before, but typically if there's stipends for boards, there's stipends for boards. So that's, like I said, there's always a warrant article for elected officials. And they typically deal with elected officials, like the town clerk's salary, it's usually the biggest thing on that. If you had an elected treasurer, some towns do, those would be on there as well.
And I would think that as an appointed member to the board, it would be up to the board to make that
Well, it's getting a stipend now.
Yes.
And so we're just, you know, we're, we're floating along in the same boat, it's like, you know, the stipend for planning board members, including the associate. It was a different number last year, and likely would be this time, you know, we launched the flare. Stipends need to be addressed, if people look at stipends for all the board members, planning, ZBA, conscom.
Hope it generate interest.
All right, so Mullen rule, and then that's what I had tree thing, and I know Connie had talked about his
There was only, yeah, the only other one was two acres, 200 feet. Again, we're adding 15 units an acre, up to 15 acres, 235 houses. We're adding additional dwelling units on almost every property in town. It's gonna affect our water, it's gonna affect our natural resources, it's gonna affect our town resources, and I think it's important to protect all of those items. And I think by rising it, raising the standard from an acre and a half, 150 feet, to two acres, 200 feet, we'll provide more protection for our natural resources, our town resources, our, our health, safety, and welfare, but will also help direct the development to more appropriate developments like townhouse development, conservation subdivision developments, transfer of development rights, which still all retain the one acre, roughly one acre requirement for building. I think it will help maintain the rural character and quality of this town, and I think it, it can help this town in the long run with clearly what is an agenda coming to our town.
Density pressure.
So, of course, I've done a little bit of research on this, and I'm gonna talk about this as I talked about the last time, if I may.
Please.
So this was a recommendation in the 2001 master plan, as we talked about before. It wasn't in the 2017 master plan, so it's a little unusual to take something that was 25 years old and it wasn't included in the 2017 master plan, and say, yeah, we should bring this thing to town meeting. So I went back and looked and did a little research, since, so this was an email to the planning board, it looks like April 16, 2014. Since the two, planning board vote of 31424, I've continued to research the matter. I found in the master plan amendment, appendix to the master plan, it noted the summary of accomplishments from the planning office dated September 23, 2015, under public education. Public education zoning and change for town meeting, that the increase to lot size to two acres failed. I wasn't able to find a town meeting article of that, but it wasn't moved by the planning board to go to town meeting. When I went back and looked at that vote in 2000, let's see. So I went back to look at 2009, which is when this was sort of being circulated about. There were 11 zoning bylaws on the list of things that the board might bring to town meeting. Out of those, there was 11 that they brought, this was one that they didn't bring to town meeting at the time. The November 13, 2020, 2008 memo from the planning staff to the board in those changes talked about how downsizing the zoning was, was not in, in the master plan. In the accomplishments from the town of planning office in the master plan in 2005, there's a document that says increased lot size to two acres failed. There is in the notes from the 2015 master plan under Carver's Housing Production Plan 2008, amend zoning, and it goes on to read, while the community's large lot zoning was put in place to slow development, preserve the town's rural character, and accommodate septic systems in compliance with Title V requirements, this zoning that maintains low-density housing severely constrains the construction of diverse housing type and supports sprawl that unless checked may ultimately degrade the town, community's rural charm, scenic resources, wildlife habitats, and air quality. And lastly, in a PowerPoint presentation that also goes back to the time when the planning board was doing the update to the master plan, it had increased lot size to two acres, planning board, town planner, and it says failed. So I think that my recommendation is this is not a contemporary piece of zoning, it is not effective. The people who've been here before have said, yeah, this is not a thing we want to move forward with in the 2017 master plan. I would not recommend putting it on the warrant. And at our last hearing last year, the planning board's recommendation for this change was a vote to 230. So if it actually had been on the warrant in town meeting and got voted down, then we'd have that instance where you couldn't bring it back without a favorable recommendation of the planning board. So, I am telling you, I think this is a, a document from 25 years ago that has since been set aside by the folks in the master planning and previous boards, and it doesn't have a place on the warrant for town meeting because it's not in the current master plan, and it's gonna create a number of issues with non-conforming uses, as everybody who's done 150, you know, foot-wide, 60,000-square-foot lot are now gonna be non-conforming structures and do basic expansions of their house, they're probably gonna have to go to the ZBA. Do you get a special permit to expand a non-conforming use? That doesn't seem like a productive use of the ZBA's time or the town's time. I would not recommend putting this on the warrant, on all those reasons.
Justice, everybody, Serpent did recommend it to be put on the master plan for 2017, and the reason it was turned down was because it had failed previously in 2005, I believe it was, which was a long time ago. But it was recommended. It does not take into account the changes that the state's bringing to this town. We spent a lot of time, time and money on the master plan and a lot of people hours putting it together and coming up with numbers that now don't make sense. Maximum build-outs, maximum density, and that, the state is coming along and changing it. And they're changing it this year, and who's to say they won't change it again next year? It was approved unanimously to go through town, to town meeting last year by this board. Whether we disagreed or not on our recommendation on it, we, we did agree 100% to let the, the folks of the town decide. And the majority of this, of properties in the town of Carver from Quarter Acre over by Crystal Lake to Pine Tree Village to Pine Street, and the majority of properties in this town are already considered non-conforming. My property's non-conforming, I only have 1.37 acres, that makes me non-conforming. I still have the right to build as long as I don't make it more non-conforming, which is moving in on setbacks and and such in that manner. I didn't have to go to the ZBA to put up my secondary structure that was approved through the town because it fit within the setbacks and limits of, of the laws that we allow. I think this is an important aspect, and like Mr. Bott said, to retaining the rural character of this town and protecting our, our water supply and natural resources, town resources, and diverting development to more appropriate areas of subdivision bylaws, either subdivision conservation, subdivision transfer of development rights, townhouse subdivision that, that the town has some control over. So I would ask this board to, whether they bring it or not, to, to at least place it on the warrant and go through the hearings and vote on it. It might end up the same as last year, two for, three against, but then the town gets to decide, not us.
I, to add to, to add to that, thinking, thinking about this whole thing, one of the zoning bylaws that we just put forward, if it passes by right, essentially doubles the number, doubles the amount of housing in town.
It'll probably be like 70%, but
Like I said, by right, it doubles, it has the potential to double the pop, the amount of housing in town. And, like you said, I, if, if an acre and a half is what the lot is now, my house is non-conforming as well. And I haven't had any issues. So, to change the zoning to expand that, I don't think it puts that big of a, I don't think it puts that heavy of a load, and as, as Connie was saying, I think it would probably actually tend to relieve a little bit of the issue going forward with any new construction regarding stress on the farming community, development around the bogs and wetlands, and things like that with regards to water and sewage.
So where are we at?
Will you accept the motion to
You would have to write the article, correct? To bring to warrant.
Yeah, like everything else, do we want to put it on the warrant?
It, that's, that's really it, and it's a change from 60,000 feet to 80,000 feet, and a change from 150 feet to 200 feet.
And we'd have a hearing on the final write-up of it.
Right, so, is that your motion?
That, that would be my motion, yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? John?
Aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Alan Sodillo says nay.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says nay.
All right, gotta be on the warrant. All right, and I think the last thing we got on the agenda is minutes.
If you'll accept the motion to approve the minutes of November 12, 1024, I would submit that motion.
I will second that.
I wasn't here.
Okay. All right then.
I, yes, I approve.
Further discussion?
Oh, yeah, I, I didn't, I didn't see
I can't go to John now, I have to go to you.
Right, I didn't see anything on there that, that stuck out, so
All right. I'll take that as an aye.
An aye, Mr. Shea says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye. Can I have a motion for adjournment?
Some move.
Second.
All right, thanks guys.
Aye.
Other than Connie and Kevin, I may not see you guys before the holidays, so happy Hanukkah, it is the 20th, Christmas Day.
Hanukkah is Christmas Day.
Christmas Day is the Thursday of Christmas.